Henry County Commissioner, Henry County, Missouri, Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, 14th day of the April term. The Henry County Commission met pursuant to adjournment at the courthouse in Clinton, Missouri. Those members present were Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner Mark Larson, North District Commissioner Amy Heredia, Henry County Deputy Clerk. At 9:00 AM, Commissioner Stone brought the meeting to order. The agenda was approved as presented. Minutes from the Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion. Motion carried. The minutes from the... That should say Wednesday. I see that. May 14th, 2025, special meeting were read. Commissioner Stone made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Motion carried. Expenditures from the following departments were approved to be paid: Buildings and Grounds, Court Administration, Employee Benefits, Circuit Clerk, Emergency Management, Roden Bridge, Assessor, Elections, Inmate Security, Recorder, Deeds, Law Enforcement, GR, 27th Circuit Treatment Court, and General County Government. At 9:30 AM, Michael Guyer, citizen, approached the commission requesting a freeze on property values in the Davis-Walker area due to recent hardships and to make a complaint regarding noise from truck traffic on highways K and 18, and request information regarding a possible noise ordinance. The commission asked Mr. Guyer to return in a couple of weeks to give them time to research whether an ordinance is possible and when Commissioner Bradley was back. At 9:45 AM, Sheriff Aaron Brown and Captain Michael Billbrook joined the meeting to present a letter which will be published in the paper this week identifying "Thermo Scientific Portable Analytical Instruments, Inc. As A Sole Source For The T-64 Defender Handheld Chemical Analyzer." Sheriff Brown also presented a form to update the authorized representatives for the Missouri surplus property sales program. At 10:00 AM, Dennis Bowers, Roden Bridge Supervisor, attended the meeting for the opening of the bid's four six-inch steel channel bids were as follows. Bid one, River City Steel, $30,329.75. Bid two, Dam Steel, $30,250. Bid three, Alro Steel, $26,959.15. Bid four, T.W. Steel, $26,969.80. Bid five, V-Brock, $31,539.75. Commissioner Larson made a motion to accept the bid from Alro Steel. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion. Motion carried with the roll call vote. Larson, yes. Stone, yes. Bradley absent. Dennis provided updates on approaches repaired in Davis Township and presented an agreement for an easement on 480 Road in Springfield Township. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the agreement. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion. Motion carried with the roll call vote. Larson, yes. Stone, yes. Bradley absent. Dennis also presented an adjustment to the cost claimed for soft match on bridge number 0370031, which the commission approved and signed. Amy Heredia, Deputy County Clerk, distributed copies of the recent audit report to the commission. Dennis Bowers shared that MoDOT would be responsible for any noise reduction signs in the area of Highway K and 18 because both are state highways, but that they would likely be only be able to post something if White Oak Township had an enforceable ordinance. Dennis will gather more information on the situation. 10:50 AM, Charlie Kidwiler approached the commission with a complaint about rock washing off approaches in last night's rain. 10:58 AM, Commissioner Larson made a motion to enclose session. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion. Motion carried with the roll call vote. Larson, yes. Stone, yes. Bradley absent. There's a couple, just little typo-y.
Yeah, type, there's one teen or which one was it?
A couple misspelled words.
Yeah. Anyway.
It happens.
Yep, it does.
So I'm going to fix those.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that. Motion been made and seconded to approve minutes as presented with a couple spelling errors corrections. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay.
I'm not sure how long we can sit on that great river check waiting on Jake because we have a certain turnaround time that we have to... Can't remember how long it says, within forty-eight hours or something?
Is that just with the check?
Oh, they'll pay within forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll just wait.
We'll send the check, I guess.
We'll wait.
We'll have to wait on that. Let's see what check though.
We won't send it.
Without the signature.
Yeah.
That's a big thing. Because it's supposed to have all three of the songs on it. Because that's on the bridge. Good morning.
Stamp please, sir.
No work at 22. That wore off a stanchion.
No, yeah.
Oh my gosh. Better polish checks. Same kind of man, I think. Needs some stamps. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We don't have too many checks.
No, it's not too bad today.
So I mentioned there, I'm good.
June 19th. Alright, so tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, we'll shoot for tomorrow. I'll have him send out a message tomorrow. I think he's coming back. We're good.
Why keep getting your paper shuffled?
That's, that's...
They're not at once.
Oh, that's your bid, Alro Steel.
That's not mine. That was your paperwork. Mine's over there.
Yes, that one. Should've went for minutes.
Mark, what time's your meeting today downstairs?
10.
Did you get Google meets figured out?
I did. Me and my technologically advanced self. I might have to turn on the power button.
Google meets is way easier than Teams, but that's maybe because I'm just used to it.
We don't have Teams, do we?
I have Teams.
We do.
You can get Teams if you want.
I want it. Does it cost money?
Yeah, it takes half. Me too.
Didn't have cover though.
Is it?
Yeah. It's still on that. We got any cleaning this thing?
What are you looking for?
Cleaning this.
How are you out?
Yeah, we don't carry it.
This is a good one, I'll take.
We don't have anything on the agenda to be specifically...
No, do we have a... Was y'all...
I got all kinds of stuff.
Let me catch up with my bills now. I'll listen to...
Now you gotta slow down a little bit.
I'll listen to Mark's view in just a minute. He's been a busy fella.
You might want earplugs.
Oh no. Is this an question again?
Nope, no question.
She your intern? What's your name?
Jessica. Tiffany.
What? Can she speak?
I don't know who Jessica is, but it's me now, I guess. The third time.
Who else?
Jessica.
Thank you.
Tiffany.
She was your intern.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to be a second...
I'm gonna knock.
Might want to move down another couple chairs. Okay.
The floor is yours, Mark.
Are you done with bills?
Yep.
Alright, this is my new intern, Tiffany.
Jessica.
It's been a long few days. Generator moved, y'all see it in the hole down there? We got the date set for June 19th. They're gonna shut down for four or five hours. With that being said, can you send a email out today?
Yeah.
They're gonna shut off the power after hours for 10 minutes tomorrow.
10 minutes after hours, so at 4:30?
At 4:30. With that being said, they asked that all electronics are powered down. They have to get into the two fuse boxes downstairs. They shut the power off and get the cases off of them, and they said that'll take about 10 minutes.
Okay. Sometimes jury trials don't stop.
It's basement, first floor.
Okay.
Well, that'd be the jury trial.
The courthouse.
Yep.
So...
Better make sure it's done.
Yeah. Before it happens, before that power is shut off, we need to make sure that they are done upstairs.
Could you could be in a world...
Because if they are not, and we shut down their stuff, and they're in the middle of a jury trial, we could affect a lot more than just a light switch.
Yeah.
So...
That's the maintenance bin, right? You talking to Ronnie and Chris?
Yeah, if they're the ones doing it, I don't care who's doing it.
Alright. One of the things...
What? You're, you're... They're coming in after their normal working hours, right?
Yeah, for him.
So, but you're gonna get charged at least an hour.
Right.
So why don't, instead of that, if we get done here at 4:30, right? Why don't we just make it like at 5 o'clock or 5:15? Set a time that would give you... They're not standing around down there, and then all of a sudden we find out something's going on. Put a little distance between the end of the day and the worst...
Well, that's where the jury trial went to like 8:00.
Yeah, that's the problem. Jury trials, 8:00, the jury was still up there.
Sometimes they'll go into midnight.
Yeah, they was up at 8:00.
Because you, I mean, nobody, you're already putting something in that nobody knows the answer to, so why don't we alleviate all that? Set it up for Saturday. We're gonna pay overtime no matter what. Why not just do it on a Saturday where we're not affecting anybody? We're not holding them up, where we're paying them for standing and looking at each other?
I'm pretty sure they're gonna have this memorial over the weekend, so I think they're gonna be gone.
Can you put it off for another week?
Yeah, but we can put it off.
But I put, that's what I do. Just make it simple. That way you're not, you're not dependent on up here, and we're not dependent on something there.
We're in schedule.
It hasn't been in, I mean, it hasn't been in for a while, so one week's not gonna make much of a difference.
What are they gonna get into? What do they have to get into? Don't they, just the main power button, isn't it?
Yeah, the two tie-ins downstairs.
That's all there is.
But to get the cases off.
Yes, they just have shut everything down while they hook it. I guess I'm having trouble with four hours to...
So that's just for the 10 minutes. Whenever they hook in the generator and everything, they have to hook the courthouse power into the generator and then also coming out of the generator. So they don't wanna, you don't wanna play with 220 live.
No, but what I'm saying, I just can't hardly believe four, five hours for...
It's not gonna take that long.
No.
No, but you need to understand also...
They're planning for a work case scenario.
That they're, they're doing that, and you're doing it on a Saturday, and I don't care what business you are, I'm not coming here for two hours on a Saturday for overtime and charging you that because as a business, you can't do that. So you're gonna get charged a half a day, no matter what. I mean, that's, that's just, you know, common sense.
Well, I just know that jury trials don't work on our schedule.
No.
Right, right.
If, if they go over that 10 minutes and they're up there and they're on...
You don't shut them down.
They have somebody on the phone who's witnessing at the moment or something, and we've shut them down, we, we could throw their whole trial.
That's, that's why, I do it on a weekend when you don't have anything to worry about. You're gonna pay the overtime no matter what. But that's just...
Well, first off, you're gonna have to talk to them. Let them know we can't do the, the courts, you can't just shut down like that. We can't set a time and say they're done. Not if there's a jury, there is a jury trial going on.
The main hub of our network and phone system is in the basement. You turn that off, you shut it all down, as far as phone and internet go. Yeah, we may have lights.
And I wanted to move all the breakers out from underneath the moat, put them in the building.
They are, that's where they're being moved to.
That's what...
That's another reason that we shut the power down.
Oh, okay. Now we're getting down to, I'm getting a little facts out of it.
Oh, that's getting moved inside.
That's one of the things that need to be done. I'll agree with that. Now, they're gonna do that?
That's not coming out of my budget.
No, it's facts.
And that was part, not part of the original bid. That was all stuff that maintenance added on.
Do we have a price for it? What are we gonna charge, or?
I, I moved the generator over.
You better, you know, that, I'm telling you, we better find out a little more about this whole deal. If we're getting into that, that could be some bucks.
I'm gonna talk to Chris. But it's, I mean, you guys have been wanting it done, so if they're gonna do it...
Hey, but guess what? The big thing was getting it done and getting the, it's, it was pricey.
It's gotta be under, it's gotta be under the $12,000 threshold because otherwise he'd have to bid it out.
We're gonna have to have a breaker box, new breaker box.
If it was over $12,000, he'd have to bid it out.
Have to give bids on it.
So it's not over that, I mean...
Well, if it, I mean, if it needs to be done, it needs to be done, but I would...
If it is, he has to bid it out, and he knows that.
Well, see, what they're doing, we're pulling old fuses that was back in the old days where they had the canister fuse.
Well, I understand what's going on.
And, and you go to swapping them, I know what, it's nothing, I think $3,000 or $4,000 on a damn box.
Chris is well aware, he's called and asked about what the bidding threshold was. He was told what the bidding threshold was. He's, he knows, so, and he hasn't asked to bid it out, so I'm assuming it's under that bidding threshold, so he won't have to bid. If you want to know, call Chris.
I will, I'll find out.
That's, you need to get the answers from Chris.
We need to talk to him. Because that, and I'm not complaining about it, because that's something we've wanted to do for a long, long time.
Yes.
But the big thing was getting it done.
I thought it was finding somebody that wanted to even touch it.
Yeah.
Well, it's been touched. Because most of it's been moved.
It has?
The new breaker box is already hanging on the wall.
Then it already got it. Okay, then we're...
The wire, the water, they'll run water.
They're running the water.
Bad mix, Mark.
But they're running, the other office running the wire and hooking up?
Yep.
And are that, is that an add-on cost there?
I moved the generator.
He's, in other words, he's saying you need to talk to Chris.
I think somebody better talk to him. I don't want to come up here with them, Big Bill, not, we know what we got bid out.
I don't, you'll have to excuse, I don't know who Chris is. I have no idea.
He's a maintenance, Chris where's he?
Is he the, the older gentleman?
He works over jail most of the time now. That's where he's at.
About three and a half foot tall.
You're on video, Mark. I'll have him come up.
Yeah. Because we definitely want to know what...
Well, yeah, I think it's a good idea to know what it is, but they're already halfway there, we're committed.
That can be a big, big problem still.
So that's generator meetings announced there at 10 o'clock this morning with the brains. So we're heading there next. Before you, I gave you a copy of a...
Sorry?
Siren protocol. The reason for this is because Subby and I, in my, my office all together, have taken a lot of heat the last couple of days over tornado sirens. We have nothing to do with tornado sirens. But I agree with the public, they need to be tested. We need to know when they work, what they work.
What's the reason for them not being tested? You got, just speculation.
Well, the last one we, we caught, when Subby caught with them is they forgot.
But they're in charge of them.
So they're in charge of setting them up. Each of the interviews are in charge of maintenance.
See, the other, when they got the sirene, I know down at, down at Tightwad or the school, that went through the emergency management grant deal. They worked on it. It's Todd Sirey, I think, someone done that.
So the cities themselves own the fire, or the, I'm sorry, own the sirens?
The entities do.
The entity, the municipalities, I think. Now, I don't, that's the way I understand it. And then the fire department down at Tightwad is a little, I think they got involved in it too.
So I, we talked with Bill Collins in Tightwad, and they, there's a little dysfunction down there.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to maintenance that one there at the fire station.
Yeah.
And that, we're pushing for the testing so we know which ones work before the storms happen because where did the tornado hit Monday night and where did the tornado siren not work?
Yeah.
So we're hoping one of y'all commissioner-wise can, can send that over and put a little pressure on communications to do monthly testing. I know we have no say so, but...
I thought they were, I thought they were supposed to be done like the first Wednesday.
The first Wednesday of every month, I do.
I don't think Clinton does theirs, they were Wednesday, did they?
Yeah, they, Clinton, I don't, the only time that they don't do it is if there's storms in the vicinity.
I didn't, they was every month.
They haven't done them last two times.
So communication sets off the city of Clinton's also, and they, they were not tested since the last time either.
Really?
The last time was when?
The 6th of May, no, 7th of May.
We're trying to get the exact last time they were tested.
It hasn't been that long.
So... But they need to be done monthly. If there's severe weather or if it's raining that day, do it the next Wednesday. And I know we have no say so, but we're the ones taking the phone calls and getting the, getting our bets due.
So this should go to 911, not the city council or whatever it is?
911s are the ones that set them off and should be the testing.
Yeah, but he's the one who tells them to set them off.
Right.
That's the next thing.
Seems to me like it, if you're gonna send it to 911...
We had that issue here a while back.
To the city council teams that they understand they are...
Are you talking for testing purposes or for...
No, for the actual, it doesn't matter, even testing, you gotta have who's, who's the one setting them off. Testing...
Who's instructing the dispatch center to set them off for testing?
We got a protocol now. We do that to them.
I didn't get that far reading your sheet here, but...
Okay, prior to the protocol, who was in charge?
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows who, who, who actually said you guys need to test the sirens.
Or who's, who needed to set them off when they need to be set.
So whenever they need to be set off, they come from the National Weather Service.
Because we had that.
We have, that comes from the National Weather Service.
It seems like emergency management actually should be in charge of this. You're the ones that deal with the National Weather Service, so...
And you're the ones talking.
Yeah, in all actuality. And I know it hadn't been like this, but in all actuality, since you deal with the National Weather Service, you guys should be the ones to tell, uh, fire stations, whether it's Clinton, Tightwad, whoever, cities, whatever, this needs to be done. Because that's your, that, I mean, it may not have been your job, okay? Or you have not, maybe nobody's given you the authority for that to be your job, but I believe that needs to be your job, and I think you're the, because you're, you're the one involved with it's gonna have to handle it.
You're the one involved in broadcasting it. That's a big thing. That's where it comes in.
And that will make it easier probably for you guys? Am I not right, or am I, I mean?
Oh, no, go ahead.
I mean, because the thing, this, this, some of this stuff is really, really ignorant on everybody's part. I mean, it really is. This, this, this is something that you're dealing with people's lives, and if that's the case, then, you know, in my, I just, you know, I'm gonna make people mad, but I, I'm good at that. Somebody needs to pull their head out. There is no excuse whatsoever for these not being tested. There's no excuse for these not going off, and it seems a little stupid, and I'm gonna use the word stupid because that's what it is. If they're not tested, how the hell are you gonna know if they work? And then you have a scenario like we just did down at Tightwad. So instead of everybody going, well, I don't know, and I don't know, how about we, as a county, in charge of emergency management, say, you know what, Mark? You and Subby, this is your deal. Make it work. Make it work. If you have blowback from it, then bring it to us and let us take the heat, and then we can deal whether it be, because it apparently, the city and the county don't get along. For what reason, I have no idea, but the longer I've been here, I'm starting to see that, and we need to end that. They need to get along, they need to work alongside each other, and quit butting heads over stupid crap. Get this stuff done, do what everybody was elected to do, and that is to represent the people, whether you're in the city or you're out in the middle of nowhere. Doesn't matter. Our job, their job, is to do what's right for the people, and nobody wants to step up and do it. So personally, and I mean, I'm...
People want to step up and do it because this, we have the power.
Right, right. Well, I mean, I, and I'm not gonna speak out of term, but I think Jim's with me, I think that this, because you're the one in the middle of it. So it's gonna be a whole lot easier for you than for five or six or seven or other people to say, well, we're gonna do it on this day, we're gonna do it on this day, we may not do it. Do it. Be done with it. It's simple. I'm pretty sure it's probably the flipping the switch and the damn things go off. So this is not rocket science. There's no need to make it into it. But unless I'm saying something, Jim, you think is wrong, and I don't think I am, I think that's gonna be the easiest way to handle this.
Ken?
Yep.
I think the big part is, we're the one. I think the big part is, we're the one, we, we put itself in the middle of it, that's what we done. When we're, we're advertising, just like saying, call your municipality, call your elected officials, get them, set them off, alright, then fine, then somebody's gotta do it. The big thing is, just like the municipalities, used to, the way it used to be set off, the city done it. Cause they was handling, but you got some of the outlying, just like, uh, Blairstown. They didn't, I don't even know where there are sirens ever working yet. Because nobody was over there. And there's where you get into some of those cases. And the one down at, down at, uh, Tywad, I know they was school and them, that's how they ended up with them, because Todd Sirey had had this grant they could give for sirens, so he put in for it. And that's where we got started in it. And then as we have progressed along, and nothing bad with Subby, if he's sitting on there and he's going as emergency management, so therefore he's doing the broadcasting, a lot of, some of that comes out. And, and so therefore, somebody's gotta set them off, and I don't know, cause you see, there was a deputy or something see a tornado and they'd call it in or something, set it off, I think years ago, what I've heard. And I never did know, because most of it came through the fire departments and stuff, cause they is here twenty-four seven. Just like nine one one, but they're not outside, they really don't have, they can only do what's, they're told to do. Really, what comes down to.
Yeah, the National Weather Service sends it over and nine one one sets them off.
Yeah, that's who sends it.
But see, that's who has to do it, and if that's the case, then National Weather Service is who's gotta set it off and.
National Weather Service does not set them off.
Huh?
The National Weather Service does not.
But they notify them to set them off, that's what I'm saying, they're the one notifying them to set them off.
Right.
But now on this testing, fine, then you gotta figure out, and if that's the case, then fine, on the testing, then you've stepped up, you got, somebody's gotta make sure it's done. And the cities, municipality, each municipality, used to set it off, do it, but if that's the case and they're not, just like down at, down there, I don't think anybody knew what, how they went off, down in Tywad.
Well, I'm about.
Are you having an emergency management meeting tonight, right?
Yeah, but.
Can you guys address that?
So that's, that's fire department wise, these are owned by municipalities, not fire departments.
That was my next question was, so say it doesn't work, and when we, we do a test and it doesn't work, who is financially and who is in charge of fixing that?
There's, there's two parts of that. At least you know it's not gonna work.
Right.
So you can have other means.
Sure.
And then that's up to whoever owned it, the municipality or to them to repair it.
Okay.
But just like some of this down there, it was right on the horse Benton County line. Dude, where a lot of that happened down in there, that's, that's where some of it fell. It's kinda like a division line when we had the storm, and it was right, right here, well, how come nothing went off? Is because, well, it wasn't in our area. And you all said that, well, now it wasn't in the national weather, so therefore, you're, you're putting yourself there. You'd say it, that's where it's at. But somebody, and when you're that close, it really needs to be go ahead and set it off. Just safety wise, it don't hurt anything.
I remember the days when the Calvin Fire Department drove around in a fire truck sounding with sirens, because that's all we had.
I can remember that too, Kelly.
There are other options if they broke down.
But I don't know the answer to what you're doing, and just like Mark, and, and that's fine, but that's where, that's where it's headed right now. But we're putting ourselves there.
Well, they're the ones catching the backlash from it, so why not let them? This, this is a policy you guys.
Yeah, that's something we came up with, so.
So.
Either that, or we're gonna start giving out everybody else a storm alert, so we don't have to take.
Right, I mean, I, I understand the frustration. Are you wanting us to put this out, or are you going to?
No, I was hoping, I'll, I'll send it over, but it's something that needs to be sent to communications, but you all can read through it, make sure.
Yeah. Not only communications, but every municipality that owns their own.
Siren, yeah.
Siren needs, needs this as well.
Right.
Yeah, then Clinton owns all theirs, don't they? Municipally, that's what they do. I mean.
I think it's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
To me, it's who owns them, who set them off.
Do we have a list of everybody that, I mean, I guess we probably do.
I wouldn't, but I don't, I don't know.
We don't have, so it's just.
Well, that's, uh.
Because I'm, I'm with what you said, I, I think it should go to nine one one, but I think it needs to go to the individual.
In municipalities, that has a fire, if they got the sirens, that's who needs to set them off, or test them.
Right.
If that's the case, because if they're not working, then they have to have maintenance people take a look at it.
Plus, this actually.
You can't.
If you send it to all of them, this puts everybody on notice.
On the same page.
Right, and it, it, it covers everything, then kinda forces a hand.
And, and, and let's face it, they don't do that every day, they're, they're not in their office as city clerk thinking about old tornado, I mean, that's just not something that. So if you had something that, you know, a remind, an email reminder that you send out a phone call every, a week before or something.
I think that's where it came from years ago with, with the fire department, that's, who was down there all the time. That's who did the work on them, so. I don't know, I'm just talking, that's, that's, that's my thoughts, but, but what I'm saying, I understand how it's happening. Because it's, it's being progress that a way.
So would it be?
And that's your social media, when you're putting it out, just like everybody's gonna listen to their, uh, weather radio. Usually, most of them have it, unless it's somebody outside.
Been a mess and haven't been working.
Yeah, and some of them don't.
They actually stayed up this last, this last go around.
That's, that's part of it.
Nobody wires this last go around.
So anyway, but that's, that's a big thing is, and I, it needs to be who's, who has it. If it's Blairstown, they need to have somebody that's gonna check it.
Do you have a list?
No.
You don't, and who this, so then we basically have to send this to the, to the cities and to the fire departments, I'm thinking, and then to nine one one. And that would cover everybody? Then I think that's what we have to do.
Oh, I gotta hold this.
Okay, what is?
There is a shelter set up for Red Cross for assistance. It is in Warsaw. We are not getting one in our county. We, we need to have a recovery plan set in place before, before they'll set up in our county. Last year, we had that set, where Dylan was gonna do it, the recovery plan for us. Do we know where, where we are with that?
I don't know.
What's a recovery plan?
Yeah, that's the first I heard of it.
Recovery plan, what, how, 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 how you're gonna recover, that's your, that's your groups that come in and, and help with assistance like Red Cross.
Yeah.
Um, the Baptist, the, all the different groups that come in to, to help, uh, with shelters, with money, with, with, um, generators, things like that.
So we had this last year?
We had it set up to where Kasinger was gonna do it for us.
Yeah.
And then last, when I talked with Dylan, he said somebody came over and told him, I don't know who, um, to, that we're not gonna go along with it for now.
Why?
I don't know. It wasn't me.
So we're, we're gonna ask people to go to Warsaw, to go to Benton County. You live in Henry County, you're gonna go to Benton County, because we haven't set one up yet?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna work on that today, how to get people down there, a lot of people.
How about if we work on getting one set up in Henry County? That'd be a novel idea.
I agree.
I mean, where's it at down Benton County?
It's gonna be set up this morning, and she hasn't sent me the address yet. Red Cross has now.
I'm just curious where it was.
She did, she called me last night.
What kind of, do you have to have?
In Benton County, so.
I mean, is this, is this money wise, to set this up, what, what?
So, once we have the recovery plan, like whenever Red Cross, it, it doesn't cost us anything, it costs us money to get our plan.
Right.
But it, but once it's in place.
It's done.
It is done.
What are we talking about? Ballpark, of getting it set up?
Don't know, I, uh, I know when we had it last year with, uh, Kasinger, they were just gonna do that, their cost, it was, it knocked off fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
Right.
Why would we, why would we?
But we need to, we need to get that, we need to get a recovery plan in place, because.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we think it's not gonna happen here, but it happens.
Well, you never think it's gonna happen until it does.
Now, now we're behind the egg ball. So, if I can get with Kasinger, can, can we proceed with getting a recovery plan going?
I'm good with it, I think, Dylan, is Dylan one of the?
Yeah, Dylan.
Dylan write it?
Yep.
I'd like to know who.
Well, he should know about it, I'm gonna ask him about it.
Oh, Dylan knows about it, I talked in with them again this morning.
I was gonna say, I, I just talked to him last week.
Yeah, where you got the, uh.
I talked to him quite.
We've got the storm shelter added to our other plan, where we can serve applying for grants for that. Um, let's see, recovery plan to outdoor siren, shelters in Warsaw, debris removal. All this stuff on the highway and the right of ways, does the county have a place for that to go?
Yeah. I don't know of each township.
So it's gonna be up to each township?
Well, it'd be, that'd be, yeah, on the county roads. And that's the way it is right now, usually all the landlords once takes care of a lot of it, they get, hole in.
Yeah.
Mine, mine put over.
I don't know if you've been down there, um, but.
Oh, down there, uh, Taborville and down in there, boy, I'll tell you what, it's a mess. I just had a guy today, came in, lived down there, he was wanting to, he needs some tin sips, cut something, but he said, uh, trees come through his grogs, luckily, he said, I'm, I'm a safe one, some of the others went through the house.
But I, we can't do anything private, property wise, but there's a lot of stuff along the roads. The highway department, I know they're owned there, so over somewhere, they have a dump site in Brownington.
In Brownington?
Toward Brownington, um, we watched them driving yesterday, but, but for, for the rest of the roads and right of ways and stuff that aren't highway department wise. I didn't know if we had, so it's up to each township.
We don't have a place outs, where I'd have to say it'd have to be, if that's the case, if you're gonna look for something like that. But most of it, I know it out in our area, just stack it up and burn it.
That's kinda what I was thinking.
That's what we did.
The problem with that is.
And most of the farmers.
When you have buildings that are in the road, you can't just back up a building and burn it.
Now, big buildings gotta be destroyed.
Yeah, EPA and a bunch of regulations.
Yeah.
And once it's, once it's in the road, it's not their problem anymore.
And you're one of them.
And you gotta get rid of it.
Some of that falls under then the insurance they have, usually will take care of a lot of it.
Does Benton County have a debris, a debris location for people to bring stuff?
I just go to landfill.
Yeah.
Do they have a landfill?
No, they have a dump site.
Oh, they have a dump site.
And I, I know the city of Clinton does for their debris out by there.
Well, that's out to wastewater, but now you can't just take everything out there, can you?
No, 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 that's.
It's just for trees and, you can't take buildings out there and hell, there were things like that. But the county doesn't have any land to make a dump site on.
About done.
That's good, you got a meeting in fifteen minutes, they could start again.
I approached communications about CAD access last year. That's the computer aided dispatch to where we can see what's going on in the county, because we can't hear on the radio. So like when this tornado hit, the state's calling and asking what's going on here and there, and I have no earthly idea.
Well, I've been there, and they call, wanna know what kinda what, what you hear. It's not just like gloria and seven, it's whatever you can do, you don't have, uh, not everybody has a setup to be able to do everything. Go out and find out, tell county what's going on.
If we do like, I'm gonna refer to other counties, we're gonna play cat dip, if we do like other counties and we have access to the CAD, we can look at the screen and we can see everything that's going on in this county. Every call, every, everything that.
Do you have nine one one call list, is that what you're running?
It's, it's, it's three nine one one.
I don't know, I don't know, you're, I, like I say, if you're not careful, you're gonna be full time. I'm talking about handling just events.
Well, I know, but that's my job. To a certain point.
What's the miracle?
Well, you need, you, yeah, you need to know what's going on.
Yeah, when the, when the state calls and they ask, well, what about the trailer that rolled over with it, I have no idea.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to keep up with every little item. And I really don't know how you're gonna do that. Even if you got it. Cause just like down there.
What's it take to get into that? I mean, I guess it's not. You're the emergency management director. Whatever you need to ensure and to make sure that you're able to do your job, there's no reason for you to have to call someone to find out, hey, what's going on out here. There's no reason for you to have to get in your truck and drive, kill thirty, forty minutes, come back, kill thirty, forty minutes, to respond to somebody that is asking a question about a scenario. If it can be done sitting and looking at a screen. I mean, guys, this isn't rocket science. And, and I, and I, I get to a point, Jim, what you're saying, as far as you don't wanna get too big or this or that. But, but once again, we are not in the sixties, we're twenty twenty-five. When you can't perform and do a job and you cause an issue, now the county is at fault and we're negligent. So, you, you, there, there's a, and I get it, there's a fine line to walk, you don't wanna, you don't wanna have to do stuff to where like, your emergency management up in Jackson County, which is huge and, and all sorts of stuff. But, like I said, it's twenty twenty-five, this, this, we're, we're not Little Podunk Henry County, or else we're always going to be Little Podunk Henry County. It's time to get with the times, it's time to give everybody, doesn't matter who they are, what their job is, the tools to be able to do their job and not hold them back. If you screw up, that's on you. If you are going to screw up and we have that in our mind, there's that possibility, I'm just gonna be brutally honest, I'd fire you. I mean, I've, guys, I'm direct and to the point. Do what needs to be done to ensure you do your job to the utmost to where people, when they look at Henry County, they go, hey, that emergency management, they're on top of it. Not when you walk in the door and people laugh and say, those guys, man, they suck. I, I'm, I'm just, I got.
One of the things there, I didn't know, uh, where is it, Benton County, one of the things they, or St. Clair County. I know when people wanted to know, uh, they was reporting something, it went straight to the emergency manager.
Right.
That's what the people's to call in to them, but you can get a, with, with a scope of that deal down there, that's a lot bigger deal than just trailer roll level or something to hear about.
We, we, we actually have a lot more damage than St. Clair County does.
Yeah.
I know Racket, well, Racket's not part of this, but I know right there at Tywad, that's bad.
But I mean, downstairs.
What, who, whatever that thing was, the CAD deal?
Yeah.
Who, who is that, what is that, and why won't they?
The, that's computer aided dispatch, it's just.
Who called?
It's a log of every room.
For, for police, fire?
Medical, everything in the county.
Okay, so why, what's the issue?
What?
Of being able to get in it?
Doctor Scott came over when I asked him about access, and he said that the powers that be called, and then he think that we needed access. And he's over.
Who's Doctor Scott?
He's the nine one one.
Chairman.
Chairman.
So he, he unilaterally decided that. So he, he unilaterally decided that you don't need access to be able to do your job?
Correct.
Really? Uh, well, I'm saying on record, he's wrong to the umpteenth degree. That's, that, there, there's no reason for it. I mean, I'd like to know what his reasoning or the boards made reasoning or whatever is behind not thinking that you guys as emergency management don't know, don't need to know what's going on in the county. I mean, is, is he gonna pump everything over to you? When, I, what I do is I get his number and every time I thought there was something going on, I give him a phone call. Doesn't matter what time or day, then, then see how that goes. Because if people are putting roadblocks up for you can't do your job, then I would, you know, and that, like, it's not right, but I get them involved. And they'd be involved to the point to where they wouldn't want me to go away. I'll give you what you want just so you'll leave me alone. Yeah, yeah. Because I mean, that, that's, that, that's, that's like very ignorant on his part. I mean, it is. You don't, you don't do stuff like that. You, you better have a really, really good reason to keep you from having the information that you need. And I don't, like I said, I don't know Doctor Scott from Adam. I may be.
Depends on what you're, depends on what's coming across. It's just like what comes into nine one one. If it's somebody and say there's a shooting going on and it's an active deal and it comes across, you don't wanna spread that all over the county.
But, but you wouldn't be.
No, you wouldn't, no, you wouldn't want to, but that's still.
How would you spread it all over the county?
Let somebody, I'll go on phone call so and so. That's problems. That's what, that's what it.
But if they're, Jim, Jim, wait.
It depends on how many, no, you don't.
You, you get, you get, you get, when you're, when you're gonna say stuff like this, no, when you're gonna say stuff like this, you have to back it up with facts that actually, that actually means something. So there, they, you got three people down there in that office that are gonna have access to that, that can see that. And I'm, I'm using her because she's the, she's the intern. So they look at this and you're telling me you think that one of the three of these people's gonna pick up the phone and call somebody and say, hey, you know what, so and so just tried to kill himself.
No.
In what world are you living in?
I'm living today's world.
Well, no, you're not. You're living in the fifties world, actually is where you're living. Because.
Let's do some checking to see what the rest of, I will check in Johnson and some of those, okay?
Trying to keep people from doing their job and then getting on them for not doing their job. I'm, I, I gotta.
We got a meeting downstairs. You got any questions in particular for our, in every DNR?
No.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, though, I will call.
Hold on just a moment.
I called Johnson and, uh,
I've got somebody on hold for you. Go ahead.
Called Johnson and some of them, see what they got there, how they do that. Okay? Okay.
Hold on.
Who's it?
Um, he has questions about the property tax. You could, oh, oh, no, you got it.
Oh. Hello, just stand. Yes, yes. Okay, well, they're working on it right now, trying to get it all solved. But we haven't got everybody here working on it, working. Jake's been working too and trying to get it resolved, get everything going on. That's what I'm trying to, and then I guess they may be on the ballot. I don't know if they got enough signatures too, so I don't know what will happen there. But, uh, but anyway, I think everything's moving forward on it. Just a matter of getting everything figured out on what all the, put in there.
Kelly, you haven't had time to write up on that stuff, have you? No.
The ordinance?
Yeah.
I, I changed what we put in it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I thought I emailed it to everybody. Did I not?
You might have. I'm not gonna answer that until I look.
Let me, let me look. Yeah, your wife sent it to me and then I changed the things that we all talked about up here that day.
I understand that. Okay, well, they're, they're working on, trying to get her down.
The only thing I didn't have was the.
I'm Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner. Yeah, mm, okay. And what's your name? Jerry Palmer.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Unless, did you send it in teams?
Yeah.
I'm looking right now. I just dreamed that I sent it. I did change it. No, I don't see it there either. Well, I do have one. I did.
Well, that's.
After Wendy sent it to me.
That's some of the problems I had with ordinances. Uh, somebody's gotta enforce it. And then when it gets into that now, nowadays, then it goes, then, just like the city or any municipality, they can't do something. They have to then turn it to a, uh, attorney and then it'll have to go to court. And then that's when they start process.
I even have an application.
Cause when it gets in court, a lot of the stuff they can't do. So I don't know. But that's, I, I understand where you at there. I have trouble with ordinances that you can make an ordinance, but if nobody follows it, it doesn't do any good.
I'll drop it into other various documents under county.
Yes, yep, that's right. But I'll tell you what, if it is, if it's got an ordinance, probably the people talk to you be in the municipality that you're living. If it's Clinton or wherever it's at.
Here is the app.
Okay.
I know I did that the same day.
That'd be the people talk to you down in City Hall.
Gotta find where I saved it at.
Yeah. Creative citation. Yeah. Mm-hmm. No, I'll agree. I'll agree with you. We got them out in the country too. So. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I can't find it. I may have to look for my computer because I can only get on my desktop up here. I can't get in my.
I didn't think you had it done yet anyway. I figured whatever it was you were doing, you had time, so.
Yeah.
Listen, your eyelids, buddy.
I may have had my eyes shut.
Hmm.
And just resting.
I think they can do something about it. Yeah.
The cat asleep half way to take the deal.
I, I don't know, and I don't know what they can do without going to court. Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
I do have it somewhere, Mark.
Okay. All right.
I did drop the application into teams.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, bye. How's Jerry? Palmer, he, Jerry? Well, he got off on, he got off on, uh, Senate one, uh, one ninety.
Jerry Palmer?
Yeah, then he, then he wanted, uh, then he got off on municipality and the ordinances that they have and trash it and stuff like that, picking it up. And he said, then you can go down there and go to court and then you can't, you have to go to court. And I said, yeah, okay. Any more, that's the way it all works. So I don't know the answer to. You know, something I wanna, I really, uh, and that's something we're gonna have to talk about too. If we, if we go ahead and do the Senate about one ninety and then if they vote it down, say, Lord behold, something happened and it gets voted down, then where do we stand?
Yeah, you've already passed the ordinance. If, if you continue on, if you don't wait for the election and you pass this ordinance before.
Then it's takes.
You've already passed the ordinance.
The ordinance is in effect, it's in effect no matter what.
Okay.
I don't think a vote down will affect it in any way. A vote up's not gonna affect it in any way and a vote down's not gonna affect it in any way.
Well, I guess my thoughts are, you're still listening to people, if that's the case.
I mean, it's already enacted. You guys could, uh, you could do anything to it at that, I mean, at that point.
I don't know. That's, I'm, that's why I was just asking. That's my big thing is, cause then you have to, cause the public's got a vote on it. And I'm not giving that at all. I just wanna know then where do you stand? Cause you're going again, what's the public really want?
I mean, it's a possibility it could get. I mean, that's.
I mean, because elections, elections, you know how that goes.
It would surprise me if it got voted down.
Would surprise me too, but I'm just saying what if, cause that, you never know. Okay, I thought Chris was out there a while ago.
He'll be back.
And I don't know on this National Weather Service and what they, what they gotta, I'd say, uh, here if we're not careful and, and nothing bad, but just like Sebby and I presume he's out the radio station when he was doing his broadcast.
He was in his basement.
Huh?
I think he was in his basement.
See if he's down here in the basement.
No, his basement.
Is he is.
He does it at home.
At home, yeah.
Well, if that's the case, but that's some of the problems because he's connected. And, and that's for people, but I, and, and good or bad, I don't know. I'm just telling you what.
I, I would put it this way. I'd be venture to bet people would be very, very surprised how many lives something saved that night.
There, there.
Without a doubt.
Yeah. What, 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 what are you, what are you saying, Jim? I'm just, I'm curious. I'm not, I'm not following.
You have to, division line that you could fall into on some of that stuff. And, cause what they're doing is getting, the big thing is whether you get called just like them, all that, you need to check the sirens. You know, to me, it's who owns the sirens. That's who needs to be talked to. Just like municipality. If Clintons did go off, they needed to talk to whoever it was, find out why.
Nobody's disagreeing with that, what we're saying, what they're saying is we need somebody in charge to make sure that that's happening with all of the cities. Okay, we understand Clinton's in charge of them and Clinton sets them off. Emergency management's just gonna be the next guy to say, have you tested your sirens? If you haven't, you should. You, I mean, it's not.
Okay, then you're asking who to do it.
Asking who to do it.
The city, the municipality.
I think that's the whole point. He was gonna send the letter to the cities, to the fire departments.
Okay, we're on the same page here. Everything there.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was.
I think he wanted us to send it.
Well, that's fine.
He, and I, I, the reasoning behind that is because he's probably thinking that as the commission, we're gonna carry a little more weight. Uh, maybe they'll pay attention to it.
Yeah.
Well, he's not wanting, he's not wanting Jim to take control of their sirens or anything. He's just wanting to be able to have the authority to say, test your sirens.
Well, that's fine.
I, I don't think he was wanting to take over.
Now, he's just, I know Sebby, did you get the email from Sebby?
No.
You should, you should have.
I haven't gotten anything from Sebby. I, in fact, I went down the other day because just like anything else, I, I didn't have anything.
Did you check your old email? Check your old email. Because I know Sebby said, he, he actually got ahold of, uh, and sent out a.
Cause I wanted to get with him. Cause Jeff was talking about, what was it? And I don't ask me why because there's something about, oh, Jeff, cause Jeff was there and he came up to get my track loader to move that tree off the road and down there at his house. And he said, I said, well, I hadn't heard anything. He said, well, I should need to call Sebby. And I thought, well.
Yeah, you, uh.
Sebby is an asset.
I wonder is, uh.
He is an unbelievable asset.
He is a huge asset to this county.
And the county loves him.
And I think it's good. He, I mean, everybody follows him and I think he's better than weather than what the weather station is.
Oh, he, yeah, he's way ahead of them.
Yeah. Well, he concentrates on.
I removed the senior citizens' application because I literally just got an email from Rick that said, we changed it. So I, I put it on there and then I removed it, so.
I don't know. And it's not in my county, what?
I think there was just confusion on, Mark's not wanting the emergency management to be in charge of all of the sirens. Mark's wanting to have the authority to tell the people who own the sirens.
To check.
To test and check their sirens.
Well.
Right, right.
We're not taking on any liability.
What I would probably do is ask them. Say, hey, have you checked? Cause they need to, whoever owns it, that'd be the part there.
I think that's the, it just gives them the authority to say something.
You would think they would want to.
Like I said, I could see like the small towns, though, just not this.
Right, like Calhoun and Calhoun, Blairstown and just like Davis, Davis or Davis School or, I guess, Tywan. I believe it's Tywan still. And they only got one down there, don't they?
I don't know. I don't know how many they got. I got one at the fire station.
I knew they, I knew they have one fire station. I thought then, well, whatever, if they got one, well, Davis School's pretty close to fire station anyway.
Davis School is down there.
Oh, not Davis I'm talking about, uh.
That's where you were throwing me off.
No, down here.
Leesville.
Leesville, Leesville School.
Do they have one at the school?
Yeah, I thought they did.
I, I don't know.
But anyway, my big thing is whoever down there, uh, because that's who I'd talk to, uh, uh, Bill, Bill Collins. And I said, well, I don't know. I said, cause he said, well, who's supposed to check them? I said, Bill, I don't know. I said, I thought it was the municipality. I said, I don't know. I said, he said, well, I need to find out. He said, cause he'd been gone. And hell, nobody ever checked out that money, the batteries.
Where did the money, where did the money come from to be able to put those there? Is that tax, extra tax money?
No, it was grant, grant.
It was grants.
See, and they, they went through all the thing and they didn't have enough money to pay half of it. They had to pay half. And a couple of years ago or whenever they was doing all that, they went down and they, they drummed up, they had the fire department and then the Tywan, you know, or Leesville. They got together and got enough money to buy one. So they bought it. But I bet since it's been put up, I was single soul.
Probably checked it.
And I think if it's a fire department, that'd be the people that you wanna talk to, to check it. It doesn't take that long.
I honestly think that's just what Mark Harden's trying to figure out.
Well, he's trying to avoid.
I want to know who's in charge of it. We need to test it on these days.
Right.
And he wants to just have some authority to.
Everyone is thinking it's their
Yes.
deal.
Okay.
He's trying to head that off.
Well, he needs, all the municipalities that own it need to check it, period. And, and if, just like Blairstown, do they have a fire truck anymore where?
Didn't they?
I don't know either. That's in your area.
Yeah, I got no idea.
If that, if whoever it is over there, they got a bear, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
I'd say we could call him and that'd be the person to say, hey, you need to have it checked. Cause situations like this makes you realize why it didn't, just like that one down there. I can't, I couldn't understand why it didn't unless it wasn't in the direct path of the United States, the, where, weather.
Right.
Weather deal. Cause that, that line, it really draws a fine line.
Do we, I wonder if we've got a map anywhere that shows where every siren is in Henry County?
Yeah.
That would actually be a good thing to.
I wouldn't know where that was, would you?
Well, emergency management might have something that says where they're at, but.
I know, uh, yeah, I, I really do. I don't even know how many we have.
See, that, that's what made it be never good to know.
Windsor and how many they got. Cause doesn't Windsor have more than one or two?
I could ask Danny what, if they checked theirs.
I don't know. Calvin's loud.
Huh?
Calhoun's is loud and I know they've tested some.
Yeah, it is loud.
I know they've tested them.
And that?
You can hear it from his house. I've been out at my in-laws and can hear Calhoun's from their house.
Yeah.
And I don't know, Deepwater's got one.
Do they have one?
I think so.
What about Montrose? Does Montrose have one?
I think they do. I, I don't know, but I think they do.
I'll find out from Mark.
But we need it. But we need it, all of them, uh. But all the municipalities is the one that were, I think it falls under, other than, most of them turn it over to Fire Department, cause they're there, manning it all the time. And they've got personnel to work on it.
Well, if there's one at Leesville School, that doesn't lie within a municipality.
Well, that would, that.
The one in Taiwan I could see because it's a village of Taiwan, but if there's one out at the school, that's not a city or a.
Fire department where, the way I understood was out there by, uh.
Cole.
Cole, you know, where you.
Well, they do have, they have a substation out by Cole.
Did you hear the fire?
Huh?
Did you hear the, the sirens go off?
No.
You didn't?
No.
Okay, cause he's, he's right by Cole.
I'm like.
Is there one at the school or at the substation, do you know, do you, have you ever heard one out there? No.
We had our windows open, everything, but our power was basically off.
Right.
And no sirens, no nothing, you just heard the wind gusts, big wind and then that whistle like change.
I just don't know that there's one out there, unless they put one out there because of the school. But I don't know.
All I know is, the, I mean, the way I understood, at one time they only have one, I know, uh, cause. Bill, Bill Collins, and he was involved in getting the money up there because he was mayor and, uh, Taiwan. But, uh, they, I thought they had everything and, and, but checking was the next thing, somebody's gotta check it, I'll agree. The batteries is a big thing, cause I know one time, in fact, I called, he wondered what's wrong with the one over at Blairstown, but somebody's gotta check it. And I said, well, it's not us, we don't go checking all, all sirens, so.
So we know there's one in Blairstown?
It's, yeah, there's one over there, I was just working it, I don't know.
It's on X.
We know there's one in Taiwan.
Yeah, there, see, that's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying.
We know there's one in Calhoun, we know there's one in Windsor. We know there's one in Clinton, we don't know about Montrose. Brownington, it's a village shoot, just like.
Looks like their, uh, siren, uh, protocols are a little broken.
Yeah, their protocol, San Luis is a lot bigger place.
It just popped up on X.
What about Yurik? Do we know?
I think, I think, I think Yurik's got one.
I bet Yurik has, if they're big enough.
Yurik's good, you're not gonna have to worry about.
I'm gonna put them on the question list because we don't know for sure, but Blairstown we know has one, we know Taiwan has one, we know Windsor, Clinton, Calhoun.
Yurik, I, well, I'm just pretty sure.
Montrose, Brownington, Yurik, we don't know for a hundred percent.
Deepwater?
Deepwater has one?
I know, I don't know that, I'm just thinking the towns.
Yeah.
Well, that's how we gotta start.
Yeah. You got Windsor?
Yeah, I know Windsor's got them, I know Clinton, Calhoun, I know Calhoun has them, cause I.
Yeah. You know, when you say that, I haven't heard, I haven't heard Clint's, they caught them off, go off.
I know the last two times.
They testing it?
It hasn't, they didn't test it, cause that's what Subby's email was about.
And I'll agree, it'd be nice to have somebody, but like I say, it's just another job. To have them check in when they check it, check mark, it was done at that point in time, it's kinda like us, firing up the generator. That has to be started once a month to check it, the big one.
Big one, yeah.
And just different things you have to do, that's part of your job.
Well, nobody is maliciously not setting off their tornado siren, it's just something they don't.
No, you don't think.
Think about, you know, and if we had somebody who was in charge, say, hey, it's time to test your sirens.
And I'm not for sure, that don't fall then, goes back to the nine one one, because when people call in, they're the ones that hit the button to set it off, that's, that's all involved.
What would go back to nine one one though, I mean, the cit, the, whoever is the owner of the siren, I'm not sure who that is.
And they can set them off?
No, but they have to initiate the set off, they have to let dispatch know to set them off to test them.
Somebody, oh, to test them, yes.
Well, yeah.
I was just thinking, just fire them up, so.
I don't think that's.
Hey, put it on the counter, put it out, everybody put it on your counter and first thing they do, bring one, they have to test.
It just needs to be consistent and done all the time, done at the appropriate time all of the time.
I don't know, I had a guy, uh. He was down, down Taiwan, oh, turned, down there, bottom towards the lake, uh, Matt, uh. They walk out there in the morning, he said, they went down to their rice house, they got a place in, in the ground, they had ice, he said. Well, we went down there and he said, then he said, I looked out the, I wrote, cracked the door open to look and see what was going on, he said. All the trees are just going around the circle. But it broke down there a long show, broke the dock, main dock loose from there and moved it like eighty feet out.
Really?
They can't get down, they, they did, now they've got electricity restored and everything down there. But then they're trying to connect the docks, cause two docks completely loose from them.
I haven't personally been down there, but I've seen enough pictures to know that they've, they've got.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been down there, Jeff and them, they're down there day, but, uh, working so, I don't know.
My family lives in Taiwan, on the south side of Taiwan, they just, they just.
Missed them, huh?
Right line.
All those lucky there.
That's the thing with us, which move right by us.
Only had a couple of trees uprooted.
Yeah. Tell you what, we was lucky, we had some trees, some pretty good sized trees come down, but nothing like some of them others too. But I had two or three old farms, just, even the roots, just pulled them out of the ground.
I have an aunt that lives in Red Bud South, she had a tree, tree in her house.
Yep. And that guy this morning, he sat down and stored and come, one pair of Tim steps, he's got, got, got piece of Timmy. Said he had a hole in his garage, he said, I can't even dispatch it right now, get it done.
Well, the problem, they couldn't, nobody could get down there, there were, there were so many trees and stuff down, they couldn't get down to.
The roads is blocked.
Help anybody or, it's just awful.
The roads is all blocked.
Just awful. What's even scarier is sitting up in Kansas City in a hotel room, watching it all unfold while there was nothing you can do, while it was going right over your family.
Well, would that be, I'd hate to be in apartments up there, you know, just think about it.
Especially the way they build those apartments anymore.
I wasn't worried, I was fine up there, my family down here was the ones getting hit and there was nothing I could do, just sit there and pray. I didn't like it at all. We got to tour the, um, Kansas City current stadium up there, the.
Oh, you did?
Uh, female women's.
Yeah, I was it.
It was a really neat tour, a really neat tour. So only.
Did you have a good meeting?
Only professional female sport stadium in the world.
Yeah.
So, pretty cool.
Did y'all have a good meeting?
We did, we did.
Did you hear much about Senate Bill one ninety eight?
No, this was an elections meeting, not a.
Oh, it wasn't a county.
We talked about it at the tables, but.
Yeah, but it wasn't a county courts meeting.
It was, it is, but it isn't, it's, it's focused on elections, our fall meeting is on all the other county clerk stuff. Um, it was still the county clerk, so it was discussion at some of the tables and. I'm on the training committee and we're gonna do some training on it, this, just to kinda compare and see who's doing what.
Mm-hmm.
No, there wasn't a lot of discussion, basically when you mention it, everybody goes. Nobody wanna talk about it. It doesn't matter if they've been acted here or not.
The people, the worst thing is they, I think some of them, they, they were having attacks.
There, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Can you believe next week's the last week of May? How did that happen? This year's almost half over.
Oh. Take off.
The first week in June, I'm gonna be starting my cyber audit that's required by the state, um, for my elections. So I may be in and out of here on the first week of June.
And you got a time to look over that audit we had?
Have I had time to look over it?
Yeah.
Yes.
See, what do you think on some of that?
Um, I think Rick answered what needed to be addressed, um, the CFA, which was our majest, our biggest, um. Issue, that's the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards is what that stands for. And I don't know, I'm sure Rick may have explained it to you guys, we've gotta put what, what you've actually spent not received. So if you received a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty five.
And how much you spent, I thought was.
It's how much you have spent, and so, so that's where we, we struggle on, um, maintaining those numbers.
I thought.
I have already created a document, I actually stole it from another county and kind of changed it to work for us. That when, when an office, I haven't implemented it yet, cause still fighting my feet, I haven't had time to do this. But when a, when an office holder applies for a grant that is federal money, they have to fill this form out. Inform me of what the total grant amount was, when they applied for it, all of the numbers, that has to come to the county clerk's office. Cause we're the ones that ultimately have to report that. And then as they spend money from it, then that's where the receipts will come in and you can attach those receipts to the, to the form. So that you're tracking it as you go, instead of at the end of the year going, what do we spend out of this?
I thought we put that all in separate deal whenever we was doing any grants, you know, a separate account.
No, no, no.
Okay, I.
Not each grant gets a separate account.
He puts all the grants in one.
No, not all of them, there's no, there's no one size fits all for grants.
All right, well, I, I guess I don't understand, that's why I was asking, I was wondering.
That's, and that's why it does get confusing, because if we're dumping seventeen different grants into general revenue.
That's why I was.
Then you're, say you're spending, like, whatever out of each little line, that only comes out of that one, one line grant money, so. And then each one has a special number that it has to have and it'll tell you when you apply for the grant, if you have to report it, if you don't. Sometimes it gets missed that you did have to report it and you didn't, I mean, we just need a better grant tracking system. And I'm working on implementing a, not an application process on our end.
Cause I know.
But so that the count, the elected official has to notify us that they've applied for this grant, instead of trying to dig it up twelve months later, so.
Well, I thought.
Am I addressing the issues? Yes.
Okay, all right, well, what I'd seen, that's why I was curious, I'm just like the ARPA, where we done all that, each one of them, I thought we had a.
ARPA had it, that's why I say, that's not a one size fits all, just, an ARPA fund is a federal grant. But I also receive federal grants for elections and those don't have their own funds, they go into.
A different group.
General revenue.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
ARPA monies were different because they had to be tracked and reported.
That's what I was gonna say, everything we spent, all that was tracked.
Right, that's, but that's just.
You're talking about all the little, the smaller grants that you get.
That are still considered federal, they're still federal money.
That's right.
So.
Cause you get that, no.
Um.
That's why I was.
Victims Advocate Grants, there's federal money there, emergency management, the sheriff's office, I mean, there's grant monies all over the county.
Y'all just had them all. Okay.
Yeah, they're, it's, it's.
I understand, I, I was trying to follow that and I thought, I just know that.
ARPA's just one grant that we got, I mean.
That's the one.
And it really wasn't even a grant.
I knew we, well, we spent out of it, cause it's.
I said, we, they, we didn't apply for it, they just said, here's your money, that's, that's not a grant, in my opinion, a grant is something that you go through a process to.
That's, that's the biggest headache we ever had. And it probably helped us more when we think, really.
But yes, I am working on fixing that, so we don't have that in the audit anymore.
Yeah.
It's a tracking system that I'm trying to.
Cause that's the only thing I've seen that we had, really.
Well, when, when, when I spoke with them, that was also their main concern.
And see, that's the next thing, they never did come up and talk to us.
No, sometimes the single audit don't, the state do.
Well, I thought, they used to and they done that, one, they were four years, they were two years or wherever it is, they were two years.
Yeah, this was a, this was a single financial audit, this was something different.
Oh, this is a financial deal, yep, okay, down with you, that is, cause that's when they get into the sheriff's stuff and.
Because we had ARPA monies that we spent, that's why we had to have the single financial.
Yeah, okay.
The big audits, we haven't even seen yet, so.
That's all, I, that's what I was thinking.
But I'm wanting to get my CFA.
Yep.
Eliminated by tw- next year, so that when we do get the audit, we can say, look, we had that already, we've addressed it, we've put this new in place and this is how we're.
And that other one that we have, we need to somehow get something where the, all the office holders, make them do one and get it off our platter.
Oh, the risk, risk management.
Yes, risk management deal.
We have one in our office.
Yeah. We need one here.
It's, I think it's risk management.
Do we have to have one for the commission, we need.
I don't know.
Huh?
I don't.
Uh, for soon. That'd be a good, Mark, you work on that one. Huh?
Now.
I, I didn't make sure that.
Kathy did tell me that, that through the company that we use, that they have a, um, CFA tracking program. That they can do where they, I think it was like six thousand dollars a year, but they do have a pro. So clearly, it's not just something that Henry County struggles with, if they're making up whole entire programs and charging counties six thousand dollars a year to maintain it, so. Maintain it, so.
Well, I guess you can bill part of the grant money for that. Couldn't you?
I, there, there does need to be a better, a better way to track when you have so many people with different.
Yeah.
Different ranges.
Well, I don't, every office gets grants, seems like.
Yeah.
I understand. When you said that, because the sheriff probably is the biggest one over there.
He gets several, but so do, so does Victims Advocate. I mean, Emergency Management.
All of them.
I, I even get them in my, I mean, I apply for them in my office for elections. Pays for equipment and maintenance and.
I don't know.
I am working on something. If the question was, what are you gonna do about it, Kelly? I am working on a tracking system.
Okay.
Whether it works or not.
The only one I'd like to say that we was always digging on every year was, was that one. But that was on the big one too.
On what?
On the recover, the, every, every office.
Oh, the, the risk, risk manager, whatever that's called. Internal control policy.
Well, see, that's where it came whenever I had to, when I stamped something, then I have to initial it. And the auditor said, no, you need to initial it. I'm like, what? You used to do it.
And every auditor is different. One will say, well, why do you do that? Well, cause the last auditor told us that we had to. Well, you don't have to do it.
When we, when we used to do passports, that was the biggest headache too.
Just depends on who you get that day.
Yeah, I sure take them. See, that can go to library.
Um, I got an email that Secretary of State Hoskins is looking to visit my office on the eleventh of June. It is a Wednesday, so you guys will not be in session. Um, but if you wish, I can't remember what time. Let me look real quick.
Yeah.
My emails are a mess, cause I was gone for so long, so I'm trying to find it. Jake Greer, there we go, no?
That's what I was gonna, I gotta get my other, I need my other pipe pad. I wanna get it down. I'm gonna be gone. I thought it was sixth September. I didn't put it in my phone yet. Yeah, oh, it's, okay.
There we go. June eleventh at eleven fifteen.
Huh?
June eleventh to eleven fifteen.
Okay. Need to write this down, Mark, so you know. I'm, the sixteenth, September sixteenth on a Tuesday. And I may, if I can, if I can make it, I'll probably make it, uh, hopefully make the meeting. If something happens and the flight leaves earlier, I may have to leave early. We're gonna be gone. Cause I'll be gone the rest of that week, uh, Thursday for sure. Then the eighteenth, I'll miss. And then, I'm supposed to be back in Kansas City the twenty second or twenty second. I just don't know what time. But then the twenty third is what, Tuesday? And I just, I'll have to let you know, but I.
No, that's fine.
That's the big thing. I just want you to check, you to check to know where it is in Kelly.
So the sixteenth and eighteenth?
Just figure me sixteen, well, I'll be from the sixteenth to the twenty third. We're gonna go to Jackson Hole.
There you go.
I actually think I'm gone that week too.
I've never, I, I, we was up in Wyoming, but we didn't go spend the time. But Gail and Lynn are friends. I actually kept folks up in there. We, we travel together. They're gone all the time. I never knew where they're at, anyway.
It'll be getting cool up there, but.
Yeah, anyway, we're gonna make, that's where we're gonna go. We used to always go Colorado every year, but. Uray and just rent a Jeep and go over the mountains, but we're gonna go up there. I hadn't seen it.
My county clerk conference is sometime in that.
Huh?
I think my county clerk's conference is that same week.
It is. All we're waiting on is Chris, isn't it?
Yeah, and I just texted him to come if he could. He came up earlier and. You know, I was talking with Mark and so he texted me and said, text me when I, or tell me when it'd come up. And I said, come on.
Yeah, I'd like to know about, I wanna make sure we don't get her. But that's something we've wanted to do for a long time, move. I don't know where you know much about electricity, but you remember those canisters they had? And then they have a fuse inside of them?
Fuse in them, yep.
Guess what?
That's what's still down there?
That's what was still there. And I, when we had all the problems there one year, I said, I'll tell you what, whatever we do, well. It was costly to move it inside at that time, so I didn't know, I just wanted to check on that. Because in having them did, I don't know what's gonna curtail some of that. That could be a pricey little project. Cause at the time, I know that was the biggest problem we had. And then shutting the whole court nails down has to, cause it has to be cut down. It will take a while to come through the wall. But I presume they have everything all set up for that, the way it sounds.
Yeah, the way Mark made it, saying they're gonna have the wire pulled and everything, all they had to do.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, but that's the hookup generator, I guess. Cause that's, that's part I couldn't figure out. If you got to the breaker box. If something happens, you lose power, it kicks out. But in this case, we're moving all our stuff inside too. And that could curtail a lot of water.
Were they just coming inside the wall and doing it right there or they moving it frozen?
I don't know that. I don't know. Cause at one time, that was a big thing, was having a place and putting it. But now that we've cleaned out down there and it may be over where the whole bathroom was, what we talked about, going in that wall. But I'd sure rather have all that electric. It needs to be inside, not being out.
Yeah.
But then if that's the case, but the wiring in here is, you go up in the attic and you still got the insulators.
Insulators and.
And wire hooked to them. And some of them are still on.
That's what I had when I bought my house.
Huh? Yes, okay, that's, that's you and you and Jerry.
Yep, yep. Took every bit of it out.
There be the man with the answers.
Huh?
Is there be the man with?
Hold on, why are you standing?
What?
You're standing outside here. I didn't understand you stand. Well, you should've came in.
I don't know.
Hey, I was wanting to find out about now we're moving out all on the inside. All the boxes, breaker boxes?
We're working on it a little bit at a time.
Well, that's what I was curious on. You, you're bringing the main breaker box inside?
Well, we've, we've got some from our, our air conditioning. We've moved some stuff inside, so then, um, some of it's gonna be a nightmare.
Oh, that's what I'm.
Yeah, so, and people look at it and they're like, no, you know, so.
When it's talking about shutting down, everything like that, I, I couldn't understand. Mark and I was talking, I said, heck, all they're doing if we're just tying in.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be a big deal, but when you.
What there is to do, um, is the breaker boxes for the first in the basement are out underneath the sidewalk.
Yep.
And what you're gonna do, shut them off long enough to pull and tie the, through the generator transfer switch in there. But they need to also test the generator and the transfer switch to make sure everything works. And I talked to them yesterday and, um, they're okay with after hours or something to do all that.
Alright, the big thing in, I guess while I was getting at it, I thought was moving the main boxes inside the building.
Well.
The main breaker. You know, with the old, do away with the old, have a breaker instead of a.
As, as, as we can.
Well, that's what I was.
I'm emptying, I'm emptying boxes and like the first two, the first units for the third floor.
Yeah, you're.
They'll be moved inside.
Your air conditioning units, what you're, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm with you on them.
You know, we, we will have one of the big boxes empty.
Okay.
And then we can turn it into a, uh.
Breaker?
More, more like just a junction box and we can bring electric, more electricity into the bed, that room. And transform more stuff into it. See, that, that's the big problem is, is, uh. Whenever we worked on the first units, we, uh, tripped one of the breakers down.
Mm-hmm.
And it wouldn't reset, so we had to have. An average year, whatever, come and disconnect from the pole. We took the breaker apart, tripped it, put it back together. And then in magic marker, I have do not shut off.
Yeah. And the big thing is, get, get something in there and get rid of them old canisters.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on it.
Okay, but I, I guess my thoughts are, the box for them to get a, into a solid breaker is gonna be a little pricey there.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying.
So I was checking.
Doing, you know, I seen an opportunity to move some more stuff in while we was doing the generator. And so I'm gonna get that done and that'll be just that much less that there's still to do, you know? Um, not really a safety hazard, it's just, it needs to be inside.
My big, yeah, that's my big thing. We've talked about it for a long time and I thought, I thought you was moving the main breaker. With old canisters inside too.
Well, um.
But that's gonna take a big break.
Yes, yes.
And that's gonna be a pricey little box.
Yes, and the good thing is, is we've got all LEDs and nothing, there's no electricity anymore. You know, we don't have.
The wattage going there that we need.
So, you know, like I said, it's, um, I've had several people look at it and like, mm, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Because it, it ain't gonna be a day down, it's gonna be several days.
Yeah, to get it in.
Because.
That's.
Because we really need to go all the way back into the transfer switch.
That's right.
And start over, you know? I mean, we're kinda talking about making a junction box out there, but that's still something else that's. I mean, uh, ninety percent of the boxes are underneath that sidewalk, are not outside boxes to begin with, so.
How many a breaker box will you need in the main box to do that, to get it?
I think what's there now is three fifty or four hundred amps, but, you know? And that, again, there's a big, there's a big switch out there. We don't know what it runs. See, that's the worst thing is, we don't know.
Alright.
Without shutting it off and then what do you do if you can't turn it back on?
Don't wanna do that.
No, so.
But the, what I worry about is that breaking, or something happened.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I'm trying. The, the worst, the worst boxes are federal specific. They're illegal, they've been illegal for.
Yeah, several years.
You know, that's one breaker that wouldn't reset.
Let's.
You know, so.
Would it be smart to check and see what that main breaker box is costing?
Yeah.
To, because that's one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess my main concern, because that's, that's where all the guts are, right there.
Yeah.
Cause then you fill out.
We're emptying them, we're emptying that box.
The little ones, yeah, that's right. Okay.
But.
I'll tell you what, if you get a chance, check and see what that other one be.
Okay.
That's the case, cause that, that's the one I'm really concerned with, because if something would happen with blow that breaker. You talk about being down.
Well, see, another thing to worry about is, uh, over at the pole, they're running out of our wire.
Yeah.
They're getting down to where, um, if, if burns off another couple times, we'll have, we'll have to run new wire.
That's right.
To the building and, um, so.
Alright, I, but you think it's for, you think that main big one out there?
I'd better just go look.
Hey, check on that and see and, and sometime come down. I'd like if we look at one. I've got, we were, when we used to have the retread plant down and see how a lot of three phase run in there and I had a lot of, I had some high powered stuff. But I know when we bought the boxes, that was like.
Oh, yeah.
Now everything's there. But, but I've got one that may, if it be big enough, but. Cause I don't need all that power, but I, guess what I was looking at? If we can make work. But, but let's find out how much one, and if we can just buy it, I'd rather do that, cause I hate to do it, but. I guess what I was saying about.
Well, that's, you know, my, since the first day I walked out underneath there and I seen.
Oh.
My goal was been to get that the hell out of there into that little room.
When I walked out there, I couldn't believe it. And then they had a little generator out there. I fell over and I was packing eleven. I said, good God, I can't believe that. And I wouldn't know, and I used to have some of them. I threw them in the dumpster. Them damn, the fuses that go in there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it, like I said, you know, but luckily, we have, we have, you know. Got rid of most of the load in this building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I just wondered, cause when I heard that box, I thought, holy cat, he needs to talk about that big box if that's what we're doing. Yours is moving some of the stuff out of the little box over there.
Yeah, well, there's, there's two big.
The smaller boxes.
There's two big boxes side by side. This one will be empty. It'll have nothing in it and trying to remember what's left in this one.
Okay.
Other than, right now, it's a lot of a junction box.
Yeah.
Because, you know, without shutting everything down.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Trying to piece it in and.
Okay.
Yeah, nah.
Alright.
Game.
Okay, that's why I was.
We're trying to game.
Well, that's what I was curious about. I, I, and I just couldn't visualize and I don't know what they're, did they give you an idea how much it's gonna cost us to do that?
Well, um, what they're, what they're doing this time will be very expensive because they're just pulling in two of them back in. Other than, you know, the generator. I don't, I have no idea.
Well, generators already there. They already give us a cost, right, okay. Then all they're pulling, the other two are back.
There's a couple, there's a couple breakers and.
Okay, alright. That's what I was wanting to know. Thank you.
Good night.
If you had hollered, I've been appreciative. You could do something like that, holler. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Alright, Chris.
Thank you.
There you go. I answered my question. But I know down there and what I'm still concerned with is that big box, cause if something happened and it would blow that breaker. We are down in water until it gets that done. That's, there isn't an easy fix, so. Okay, you have anything else? I'll entertain motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Most men ain't adjourned, we're adjourned. And Bruce, you've done well. You've stayed awake all.